Good morning. I now call the June 16, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to the board disturbing others. I'll announce the school board attorney to explain the rules for this work session.
Thank you Chair Cummings. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout the meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you.
Chair?
Now begin our administrative work session with our superintendent's administrative briefing.
Thank you. Good morning Chair members of the Board. Nice to see you this morning. I have just one item as an update for our agenda. Mr. Chad Frazier is unable to be with us today, so Mr. Jonathan McGowan will lead the conversation on the Code of Student Conduct for that item. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Mr. McGowan, I guess you're up. Code of Conduct, one of two.
You can fight your way through the crowd.
Yes.
Yes ma'am, thank you. And good morning Chair Cummings, Board members, Attorney Powers, Dr. Gullett, and Mrs. Prestapino. I'm here to share with you this morning the recommended revisions to the Code of Student Conduct. As was mentioned, I am not Dr. Livinggood nor Chad Frazier, but I'll do my best to do their presentation, talking points justice. And if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, I'll be more than happy to take that back to them for follow-up if needed. Each year, a committee is developed to review the current Code of Student Conduct and provide any recommended revisions. Our committee this year included parents and a variety of administrators from different school levels. There were many hours spent reviewing our current policies and data for discipline trends, which led the committee to recommend the changes in this document. It is important to note that this is part one of the recommendations. The committee has a final revisions meeting on June 23 at 4:00 p.m. We will present part two to the Board during work session on July 7. The committee meant to analyze our current procedures and to ensure that we have communicated through the Code of Student Conduct the consequences that are attached to each infraction. I'm going to share with you six revisions for part one of the Code of Student Conduct revisions. The order of mention is not of importance. With regards to athletics, we have made a change to formalize an unwritten rule that students must be on campus and attend classes in order to participate in athletics or extracurricular activities. This is done to reinforce the importance of class time for all students. Students must attend class for at least 60% of the instructional day in order to participate. The student day consists of six instructional hours. Alotment. Alotment is a growing issue in elementary schools, and as such, we have added a level three offense, as previously we had only level one and level two offenses for alotment. And number three, the change in verbiage to remove the word minor in level two fighting offenses brings all the fighting offenses into the same language, making it more objective rather than subjective. Currently, category B weapons, such as a slingshot, razor, or common pocket knife would allow for a school to provide a level one corrective action. Due to safety concerns for students and staff, we are removing level one as an option, and schools will have to choose a level two or greater consequence. In addition, the wording or bus from 2A and 2U infractions will be removed to require the use of 2BB, which is failure to comply with bus rules, to ensure the use of bus-related corrective actions rather than in-school corrective actions are used for bus-related We are developing a new intervention with the hospital district to provide an intervention and not just a corrective action for infractions relating to vaping with THC. Implementation of the new discipline manual. This year, we are excited to roll out the new discipline manual to our assistant principals of discipline and student services managers. We have worked hard to develop an internal manual that will assist our discipline leaders across the district. The manual will help provide consistency between schools. The manual outlines appropriate responses to offenses and sets each into four separate levels of severity. As offenses become more severe, the consequences attached will progressively grow with them in severity. The best part of the new discipline manual will be the examples and non-examples given to help guide the discipline team, and will include links for supporting guidelines and documents for each infraction. The manual also emphasizes the importance of student supervision during all transitions, breakfast, and lunch. This is a snapshot of one of the infractions in the manual to provide an overview of what a discipline leader will see. So in this example, this is possession of a weapon in category B, as we just recently discussed. And the example is a student in possession, sale, or control the following: an example BB gun, common pocket knife, razor blade. Those are examples. Non-examples would include a toy gun with an orange or plastic neon-colored tip, a student found in possession of a plastic fork or knife. And then supporting guidelines. So as an example, it provides that the blade of a knife, if that is confiscated, must be measured next to a ruler and a photograph taken. So providing guidelines to discipline leaders on the process of the implementation of those Beginning this summer, we will institute several new professional development opportunities to establish new protocols for our staff to ensure that we maximize student in-class time and return students who receive consequences as quickly as possible while still providing appropriate consequences for each action. Based on research and data in Marion County and throughout Florida, we know our students need assistance with conflict resolution, and as such, we have contracted with the International Institute for Restorative Practices to provide professional development and strengthening relationships and to build social connections between all student groups. In addition, Kagan Win-Win Discipline Training will be provided to assistant principals in July. This is a two-day training that provides a practical and powerful step-by-step approach to discipline. The goal is to not only end disruption, but also to teach students to meet their own unmet needs so they no longer need to be disruptive. Finally, we will also have ongoing student discipline training sessions each month of the school year to address data, current trends, and best practices. Any questions?
I have one. Was there any discussion about when students get into altercation when they're defending themselves? Because I know that's been a common thing, and I'm just kind of curious if there's any discussion with that, or...
I am not sure myself, but I will make sure that I talk with Dr. Livinggood and Mr. Frazier, and we'll get that information to you.
Yeah, because I know we brought that up several times, because there's several incidences where students have been hit, you know, and then when they, like say they're on a bus, and they're getting hit, and they're trying to fight in the back of the bus to get out or whatever, they will get the same discipline as the student that is attacking them, or the perpetrator. So that's been on my radar for several years, you know? If a student is getting choked and then kicks him to get him off of her, you know, why she would get the same discipline as the student that is choking her? So I would like a little bit more information on that, please.
Yes ma'am.
And Ms. King, I am part of that committee. There has been some discussion on that. I'm not sure if it's going to come up in part two of this, but there has been, because I agree with you, there should be, a person should be able to defend themselves if they're getting the heck beat out of them on the back of a bus. And you back someone to a corner, they got to be able to defend themselves. So that was some discussion, I'm sure it'll be in part two of this.
So it's on part two, okay. I just wasn't sure where that fell. Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
If I may, Chair, to Ms. King's point, we will make sure it's in part two, because I too agree, we wouldn't expect that punishment to be the same, the consequence to be the same.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes, I 100% agree. That's really, really important.
Okay, I will follow up and ensure that that's part of the next presentation.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. I think part two is on the next work session that we'll have.
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. And I have a question about the progressive discipline process, which I agree with. I'm thinking about when a student gets a warning, a warning that's different from, hey, you need to sit down, or something like that. But what I'm driving at is that as a parent, if my child had received a warning, especially for something on the bus, which is such a contained area, but not just specific to the bus, in the classroom, anywhere on campus really, when the kids are under our care, if they receive a verbal warning, you know, to me, that needs to be coupled with a parent contact as much as possible. You know, we're talking parent empowerment, and as a parent, if it was important enough for my kid to sort of really get a formal verbal warning, I would want to be made aware of that and hopefully be able to nip it in the bud. Because I've heard too many times, when I hear from parents, they'll say, well, after the fact I learned that my child had been warned, you know, more than one time even, before they got that contact. And we know that kids are always looking for that way out, you know? And we have to present a united front. And to bring parents in after it's already gotten bad, so to speak, just creates the dynamic that we're trying to avoid. So I hope that we can be super proactive this year. And modeling that ourselves obviously is very, very important.
So just for clarification, not necessarily referencing, for example, a classroom redirection, you're, through the formal process, as you mentioned, kind of like that level one consequence, beginning with that progressive discipline stage from that point, correct?
Right. In my mind, there's a huge difference between a redirect and a warning.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we redirect kids all the time, but warning, that's taking it to a, I guess this has got to be the year that we get what we settle for, from our, all of us, the way we represent ourselves, and by extension, what we expect from everyone that comes into contact with Marion County Public Schools.
Yes ma'am.
And thank you, Ms. Thora. And something I've been thinking about the past couple of days with this discipline, we often talk about how we want the parents involved, and we want to notify the parents of this and that. However, oftentimes when we're doing expulsion packets or discussions and things, parents are not fully aware of their kid's disciplinary record. Many times, we've said, did you know that your kid had X amount of violations? They say, I didn't. So I want to ask the question, is it possible for the disciplinary record of a kid to be on Skyward, for parents to see it? So that when they come before us, it's nothing new. They've had access to it. I think only the parents and the kids have access to their portal, and I think that helps with that communication piece with us, because I, if I was a parent, I wouldn't want to get surprised by something if I had to come out here for my kid. But I think it puts some ownership on the parents knowing what's really going on with their kids when we put it on Skyward. So I don't know if that's possible. I don't know if the program allows that. But it doesn't have to be in detail, but to know at least, hey, your kid has this on there.
I can follow up with that as well, to see, in family access, if that's possible.
Chair, I think it's a great point, and I made a note of that as well, and I'm not sure, I can't answer that without checking. But I do agree and think that, to both of you, your point and Ms. Thrower's, that the parent piece has to be from the beginning. It needs to be formalized, and there needs to be some effort to have acknowledgement and involvement in communication. So I can tell you that I'm committed to that, and so we'll make sure that we do that. But we will address and look at the Skyward, that's a great question.
And Chair Cummings, I'll state from the legal department also, that we, this is one of the things that comes up frequently as to why it is so absolutely critical that only persons who are absolutely required to have access to Skyward not have blanket access to Skyward. Because we put things in Skyward that cannot be easily segregated from the rest of the file and the rest of the record, and essentially, anyone who can view Skyward for more than one child, or a child that is not their own, we are opening up a large box if we do that. So when we have those future discussions about Skyward access and someone needing it for this relatively reasonable thing, these are the kind of things I'm going to remind everyone of, of the fact that we have to be extremely and exceedingly careful about to whom we grant Skyward access. And the parent, of course, absolutely, and the information the parent is entitled to, absolutely. But then when there are other individuals or groups that need that access or want that access...
You don't have to be careful about that.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty unpopular, because I deny that very frequently, so...
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ma'am.
And yes, and I'm so glad we're having this discussion, because what it really comes down to is shared responsibility. And I feel like our staff spends way too much time trying to track responsible adults down. And so perhaps this can be part of our preschool communication initiative, text, so many people rely on text now. If I got a text from my school that said, your child received a warning today about discipline, please call us, or, you know, it doesn't even have to say the details. But I pray for a day when a parent can never legitimately say, I didn't know.
Right.
You know, same thing with attendance, I've heard a lot about that this year too. And again, it's such a unique year. But that was then and this is now. And I remember from my years in high school, my mom got a call, like first period, if I didn't show up. Then she got a job in the attendance office, which made it even worse, but we'll leave that right there. But you see my point, and in this day of safety concerns and things like that, hopefully we can put technology, the technology beast to good use, and automate some of this stuff so that our staff isn't burdened and trying to come up with all these cell phone numbers and everything. It really is the person that's responsible for that child's responsibility to keep us updated, you know? And I think that that will happen more and more when we really put it out there, that we need this partnership. We want this contact.
I think what you're saying is right. By doing something like that, by having that communication piece, it lets the parents know, hey, we're not against the kids. We really are on the same team. And I think oftentimes, when it comes to discipline, the role between the parent and the kid versus us is always like as versus us, where it's adversarial. And it should not be adversarial, we should all be on the same team, trying to get the same goal, same outcome, student outcome for this kid. But oftentimes, it's viewed differently. So I think when we add another layer of communication to build those partnerships with the parents and the families, it helps us to say, hey, just like we were looking at something the other night, I'm not saying any names, we were looking at the expulsion thing the other night, and we completely look at the grades and see where things start taking a turn. If parents have the opportunity to see that, and we're putting it out there for them, it shouldn't just be, the ownership should not just be on us as a district. It should be as shared responsibility as far as with the parents, to say, hey, I see some trends starting to change with your behavior and things, and let's start working on it. So I think that can help with our discipline problem, because we, teachers can't be, our staff can't keep dealing with discipline, 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 we need to be dealing with education, education, education. So we got to be able to empower our classroom. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. McGowan.
Thank you. And I'll be sure to take this feedback and provide it to Mr. Frazier and Dr. Livinggood so that they can follow up at the next work session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment from all y'all out there?
I have one more comment. I'm kind of passionate about this, and, you know, it's setting the stage for the coming year, right? You know, and a lot of kids, maybe they didn't have a good year last year, but new year, new you, you know? And we are ready to welcome you back, but we have very high expectations, because we do.
That's right.
Ditto.
You got it from all of us, ditto. So thank you, guys. Moving forward, we're going to have elementary curriculum instruction and digital learning, Ms. Beck, for the naming of the Early Learning Academy.
Wow, this is exciting.
I know, it caught my attention.
All right, good morning. Thank you Chair Cummings, Board members, Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, Ms. Prestapino. I'm just as excited as you are, Mrs. Thrower, because that means we're moving along on the naming of our Early Learning Academy. It will be fantastic when we have a name, so as they're out there and we're talking in our community, we can really, I think the name says everything, the branding that goes with it says everything, so we're very, very excited. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. And the first thing I'd like to share with you is our current Board policy, which is 8.54, the naming and renaming of district facilities. So the purpose of this policy is to establish a uniform policy regarding the naming and renaming of facilities. The objective of the policy is to make sure that we have guidelines and standards and implementation procedures for the naming and renaming, and then also to ensure that the naming and renaming of district facilities is done in a uniform, equitable, and inclusive manner. Additionally, we want to make sure that we're promoting community participation in that naming and renaming process, and that we're encouraging donations in the support of construction, modifications, renovations, or the acquisition of those district facilities. So now I'd like to share with you some guidelines that were certainly followed in the process as we were collecting names from, whether it be our employees, community members, parents, et cetera. So the following criteria at a minimum shall be considered in the naming or renaming of a district facility. First, the neighborhood or geographic location, followed by the natural or geographic features of the area, the historical or cultural significance, and then both solicited and unsolicited recommendations from individuals and community groups within those geographic boundaries of the facility. District facilities may be named or renamed for an individual, but to eliminate that spontaneous or emotional response, nominations will not be considered until five years after service, historical or cultural significance, contribution, or death of an individual meeting the criteria as set forth by the Board, and individuals for this honor must meet three of the five following criteria. And here are the five criteria. Number one, that that individual was associated with the school program for at least 10 years and has been responsible for the development of the program or some aspect of the program to a level in which the program is recognized for its contributions to the community. Number two, that that individual provided leadership for an educational program that is being recognized for building student character and skills by modeling good life habits, utilizing excellent motivation skills, and making learning the focus of the program. Three, provided leadership for the school program producing conference or state award-winning performers as individuals or a team, that that individual was recognized for outstanding volunteer service. And then finally, five, that the individual has been known for his or her contributions for the betterment of our community, state, or country. All right. Next, moving on to the guidelines, district facilities may be named for an individual, a group, an organization, or a corporate entity requesting a naming or renaming in recognition of a capital or material contribution to the district, provided that, one, the Marion County School Board retains the right to approve or disapprove the name that does not serve in the best interest of our community or the school board; two, that the individual, group, organization, or corporate entity making the request has a record of outstanding service in the best interests of the local neighborhood, community, Marion County, or the state of Florida; and then finally, that the consideration may be given to the naming a portion of an existing building for a significant gift in the amount of not less than $100,000. So now let's talk a little bit about the process that we followed. So I believe I was here briefly on, I think maybe even before May 24, but I know on May 24, you all as the Board announced the intention to name the Early Learning Academy. So we got going right away from May 25 through July 3, and we hosted a variety of meetings that our employees were invited to, staff, community members, and this was all a way to gather names and suggestions for the renaming of our facility. On June 16, which is today, we are talking about those...
Ms. Beck, you said it was from July 3 to June 3?
June 3. Did I say July?
You said July.
I'm so sorry. I'm moving forward, I'm so sorry, June 3. Thank you for catching me on that.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Sorry about that. Then today, the top names are being presented to you all at this Board work session. And then finally, on June 28, we are looking forward to a final name being selected and approved by you all as Board members for the new Early Learning Academy. So now let's talk a little bit more about the meetings that we hosted. So our first one was on Wednesday, May 25. It was an evening meeting, and we did a live virtual meeting. So we're getting better and better at that. We used a, we had a PowerPoint presentation so that all of our meetings were very consistent. We had a couple of individuals that joined us for that live virtual meeting, and I also want to do a shout-out, because although she is retired, our Early Learning Coalition has certainly been present at all of our meetings and have been avid supporters of this project. So Ms. Roseanne Fricks is joining us today. Then on Tuesday, May 23, at 9:30 right here in the auditorium, we hosted another live meeting. And then finally, on Wednesday, June 1, again, another evening opportunity, we went to the Early Learning Coalition. They graciously opened up their facility, they have a beautiful facility. In fact, it was so nice that not only were we able to do a live meeting, but we were able, with the thanks of Ms. DeBick, to do live streaming on the Early Learning Coalition Facebook page. So that was a step up for us. It was successful, as a matter of fact, Ms. DeBick came back and reported to me that there were tons and tons of views after the presentation. So we felt like that was a good way, that if parents, community members couldn't join us in person, that they certainly could see it afterwards. And we felt like by putting it out through the Early Learning Coalition, it was hitting a whole new group of people that maybe, you know, don't necessarily or regularly come to our Marion County Facebook page. All right, so let's talk about the collection of our community input and naming suggestions. So our naming suggestions were collected digitally, using a... So our naming suggestions were collected digitally, using a platform called Thought Exchange. Participants were asked to identify themselves, and I'll share with you those results, so either as a parent, an employee, a student, a community member, or other. And then right after that, participants were asked to share their thought. So if they had a thought, the question was, what should the name of the Early Learning Academy be and why? And so now we're going to share with you some of our results. So we had a hundred and thirty-one participants that went on the platform, and of those hundred and thirty-one individuals, there were sixty-five thoughts that were added, so sixty-five suggestions. And then of those, participants had the ability to do star ratings, and so there were two thousand four hundred and fifty-two star ratings. Here is the breakdown of the individuals who participated by number and percentage. So from our parent category, we had twenty-two parents that represented eighteen percent of our group, employees, we had forty-five, that represented thirty-six percent, for students, and I love seeing that, we had four, so that was three percent. Community members, which again, I was pleased with, I love, again, love our folks in the school system, but want to make sure that this is a community effort, so forty individuals representing thirty-two percent, and then finally, other, which was fourteen, representing eleven percent. All right, and what you have before you are the top ten suggested names. I'll read through them. We have Brick City Early Learning Academy, Brick City Primary School, First Light Academy, Brick City Learning Academy, Brick City Primary Academy, Bright Stars Elementary, Evergreen Early Learning Academy, Great Beginnings Early Learning Academy, Fresh Start Early Learning Academy, Marion County Early Ed Academy.
Ms. Beck?
Yes.
Go back one.
Yep.
Are these listed in order of?
They are.
How they were, which was the?
Yes, they were, they are listed in, in the order of popularity.
Was there any reasoning, and I'm just asking, I understand some historical things, but was there any thought that came out why there's like so many that had Brick City in it?
Yeah, I was curious.
So, so that is a great question, so let me explain to you how the platform worked. So when you first signed onto the platform, you identified who you were, you had the ability to add a thought. At that point, you couldn't see anyone else's thought, so you would enter whatever you wanted, or you didn't have to enter any, anything. From that, though, it took you two ratings, where you did have the ability to rate what other individuals had added. And so at that point, you could see as a participant, you could see other naming suggestions, and so that may have been why Brick City, or there were some other common things, Evergreen and different variations of that appeared a couple of times, so that may have been why there was some commonalities.
Can people vote more than once? So could they go in five times and put Brick City Early Learning Academy?
They could have voted more than once, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this was not done through like a Survey Monkey or something like that that allowed somebody to, to be tracked when they clicked a link to go to the survey, they would not be able to re-enter it again?
No, this was done through ThoughtExchange.com. We worked pretty closely with Ms. Debick, and so, yes, to confirm that individuals could go back in and could rate more than one time.
Was there a limit on the money, how many times they could vote on it, or you don't know?
Not that I'm aware of, I'd have to confirm that with Ms. Debick, so I don't want to say yes or no, but I'm not sure about that.
Okay, thank you.
We may need a runoff, so that we know that people can only vote once.
Yeah.
None of these really inspire me. Evergreen is made out of bricks, so there's that connection. And Brick City, I know we have that history.
Right. And every time, when I see all these Brick City, when I, when I see so much Brick City, Brick City, Brick City, Brick City, I, I don't think of that part of the city.
Me neither.
I think of this side over here, towards downtown, where Brick City was, when I, when I think of Brick City.
Yeah.
Again.
Doesn't really distinguish.
Right.
Right, it would be areas immediately adjacent to the square are typically what people think of as Brick City, though.
Right.
Right. The history, of course, is a bit larger.
Right, to the south of the square, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Southeast of the square, so.
Would you scroll back to, because the internet is down apparently, would you scroll back to the criteria for the naming?
Yep.
After somebody? An idea just came to me while I was listening to you.
Yes, me too, I had some ideas too.
An associate of a school program responsible for that.
Yep, I think this is where it starts on this one, right here, and so it starts with that to eliminate that spontaneous and emotional response, that nominations will not be considered until five years after the service, the historical or cultural significance, contribution or death of the individual, and then they have to meet three of the five following criteria, which is on the following slide. So it talks about that they were part of the program for ten years, they, responsible for the development of the program or some aspect of it, and that it was recognized for its contribution, that they provided, or they provided leadership that was recognized for the program, that they provided leadership for the program that produced a conference or award-winning performers as individuals or teams, that they were recognized for outstanding volunteer service, or that they were known for their contributions or betterment for the community, the state, or the country.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's what you think. Another one jumped out at me, I'm just.
I like Bright Stars. I don't know why.
That is cute.
That one with little, not little bit, with younger students, and I just like that, that one, out of all of those, I kind of liked, but that's just at a first glance without.
Can we go back to the?
The names?
Yes.
Yep.
What about like Bright Stars Academy?
I really don't like Fresh Start because Evergreen conquered every obstacle and every barrier, so it's not like they needed a fresh start, they had a fresh start and they did everything that they needed to do.
There's, there's a prison program called Fresh Start, so I don't like that.
Right.
I definitely don't like that.
Makes me think of breakfast, an egg.
Oh, the breakfast bagel thing.
First watch.
Yeah, First Light reminds me of First Watch.
I don't know if this is, fits all the criteria, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but it came to me that I would love to see Wayne Livingston honored in some way, and it just came across to me as I was listening to your presentation, Ms. Beck, I thought the Livingston Lab School of Early Excellence, Elsie. He certainly.
Played an instrumental part in that school.
Got Evergreen two and A back in the day, and then when all of the principal pinballs started happening, that a lot of decline began with that school, and there was a revolving door of administrators and everything, and I think that we've learned the hard way how that plays out, you know, when you have that lack of stability. And Mr. Livingston hung in there under the toughest of conditions, and he certainly has been an incredible employee, and he's retired. So, I don't know, I thought that kind of had a little bit of a ring to it, and I like that, you know, it's just coincidental that his last name is Livingston, but living, living means alive, you know, you're doing it and you're going for it. So, I think we definitely need a runoff, and Bright Stars is really cute, too, and Brick City Early Learning Academy, apparently that was number one. So I almost feel like we need to narrow it down to like a top three, and then have a runoff on Survey Monkey, some kind of platform where people really only get to vote once.
Yeah.
No stuffing the ballot box.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
And we would want to clarify, we would want that to happen before that June twenty-eighth meeting, correct?
Yeah, I would think.
And, and, and I would say, just for the sake of it, that there be a runoff, but also allow them to write in, if that person wants to write in someone, another name.
As long as it doesn't close it.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't close it. I just don't like to see a person being able to vote more than one time.
Right.
And, and even when I, when I see how many the participants, I see a parent, twenty-two parents, and I see four kids, so did the kids vote, did the parents vote for the kids? I mean, you really could, you know what I'm saying, it could be really skewed. I don't know how fast we can do something, do it that fast.
So explain to me, or will you clarify, how would you like, would you like all top ten, plus an additional write-in? Do we, are you, do you want to narrow that down? You tell me what you want to have happen, and I will make it happen.
Do you guys have any, let me ask this of the board members, and we don't have two here, are there any recommendations that you would have that are not up here, that are not on this list? Any names?
I just gave mine, but I don't, again, I don't know that it one hundred percent fits the criteria, but I've learned the hard way, if it's in my head and it hits my heart, then I need to say something.
And we do have additional names beyond the top ten.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Ms. Thor, Ms. King, you have any recommendations that's not on this list?
No, I, I like the Bright Stars Elementary, but for some reason, I would like Bright Stars Academy, because it, I don't know, it just sounds, that's just.
So can we add any board recommendations to the list? And we would, I would, you can reach out to the other two board members, Ms. Campbell and Mr. Browning, who are not here.
Okay.
And ask them if they have any suggestions. I do have a suggestion as well, that I would like to recommend. I would like to recommend Fordham, Fordham Early Learning Academy. And many of you may not know who Fordham is, he was one of the principals that was at Dr. N. H. Jones for a long, 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 long time, and he's about ninety-five years old, and he contributed to the educational, to this district a lot. So, and he's, right now he's in the hospital, so that would be a testament, I don't know if he fits the criteria, I know he's beyond the ten years of being retired and all that stuff like that, so that's just someone I thought of in that, in that process, he was early, he was elementary and believed in early learning, so that would be my recommendation. And then I would say get the ones from Ms. Campbell, Mr. Browning, Ms. King, Ms. Thor just gave you theirs, and then, this is just me, I would say take the top five out of these and kind of narrow it down where they can only vote one time.
Okay.
That's just my suggestion, that's not their suggestions, whatever, how they feel as well.
I think, I think they're all great suggestions, just me personally, it always makes me nervous naming any building or anything over people, because they're just simply that, they're people, and sometimes, especially when they're living, if they make a mistake, and, and hopefully no one ever does, and, and I adore Mr. Livingston, and I don't, I don't know Mr. Fordham, but if there's ever, just because if they're living and if something were to ever happen, it could bring a negative unforeseen, you know, and that's, not just those names, just any name, any person always makes me a little hesitant, just for those reasons, because they're just, we're just people.
Point taken, very, very good point.
Well, and there are historical figures that have been long gone, that schools have been named after, and then those schools have been renamed over time for various reasons, so, you know, life continues. I do like the idea of honoring people while they're still, that we know of, able to know the honor. But I also want to give justice to the fact that there was a lot of work put into this process, and that we, I definitely want to take at least the top few, I mean, these are the top ten suggested names that we have to, to pick from, plus had our own, so, and time is of the essence, so I would love to see if we could, I don't know what we're going to get from our other board members, but I think trying to narrow it down to five, five or six at the most with a one-vote platform, we could probably do that quickly. We're able to get surveys done very quickly, aren't we, Mr. Ayers?
Can we, can we do a, like a Friday to Monday, Friday to Tuesday survey period with the, I, I don't want, I don't want to negate any of these names.
Right.
Because they're all, they all, whoever made the recommendations for them, there was some value to them. And put those back on the list, I would just say put all ten of them back on the list, and then with the additions of any that the board gave, and then let them, give them a four-day, Friday to Tuesday range, and then we take the top five, you tell us, take the top five from that Friday to Tuesday survey, where they can only vote once.
Okay.
And then bring those back to us, I think that gives us, you guys tell me, I think that gives us some, something to work with. We're not, we're not just kicking against this, because we're going to go against, we're going to go with whatever the survey says, but at least still pay homage to these ten that were here, and then just add the five that, if we have any.
So then in the, when that happens, and we'll end up with five for us to choose from, based on the results of the one-vote platform?
Right. I think that kind of helps clear, takes away the cloudiness with the more than one vote. Because we want it to be just and fair.
Right.
You guys, any, any, because y'all have great insight, so let me hear y'all's insight on this.
And if you'll clarify whether they're allowed to do a write-in or no write-in?
Our write-in, we would just be the write-ins.
Okay.
Okay.
That would cover some, I'm sorry, Superintendent.
No, it's, it's quite all right, thank you Chair, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure, Ms. Beck, do you have clarification, then you have an understanding of who this is being sent to?
So, thank you for that question, Dr. Gullett. So I was assuming that this would be something that we could, I could work with Mr. Christian and, and team, and then certainly working with Ms. Debick on the, the Survey Monkey, and putting this back on our district website. And if you're amenable to this, again, our Early Learning Coalition have been wonderful partners, and having them help to advertise on their various platforms, I do think we're getting some traction using them as well, and then certainly open to any other suggestions that would be a way to get, kind of to broaden our input. I think we want as much input as we can get on this.
And so if I may, I just, I just want to say this because of the conversation, Survey Monkey, which I've used for years, it is possible to give more than one vote, so I just don't want there to be a misunderstanding, because that is possible. And so I just want to make sure we're very public about that. There's different ways to do that very easily.
What, what, is there a way that we can do it where people just get one vote?
And I'm not sure of that, I'm not the expert, but I feel like we have the experts in our district that could help me maybe to figure that out.
Because ideally, we'd like to blitz it out, you know, even send one of those big texts, you know, with a link to the whatever, and the whatever platform we end up using, and saying, you know, four days, you have four days, that's it, but it's easy, here you go, and then that way we'll be able to really say, you know, with authenticity, that, that we put it out there, you know, very widely, and, and we're excited about this, and we want it to be a good name, and then hopefully we'll get a lot of responses, but. But, yeah, I guess I didn't really realize that about Survey Monkey, so thanks for bringing that up, Dr. Gullett.
There's usually always a way. Well, and if it's, is it the board's desire, if someone were to submit their name with their input, then you would actually then have that person's name affiliated with their vote, perhaps? I'm not saying that, what you do, but there's different emails for one person, there's different ways to go and put input, but if someone were to provide their name, and I don't know if that's, you're comfortable with that, but certainly then, if I, Diane Gullett have a vote, that's my vote, something to consider.
I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I don't know why we would have to have anonymous votes for the name of a school. Unless it's something I'm just not seeing, I don't know.
Yeah, it's like, what would, what would be the downside to that? I can think of upsides, because if you have to put your name behind it, then, I'm sorry, but...
Are you worried about lack of participation?
Lack of participation, if they have to put their name in?
Boy, that's a statement. I feel the opposite.
Yeah, I do too.
Yes, if you're passionate about something and you believe in something, then you better be willing to put your name on it. Otherwise, who knows what we'll get? Stuff that we don't have time to comb through. Is it better to have more authenticity, and maybe a few less unauthentic suggestions? You know, I don't know. That's the way I'm leaning. I guess I need to think about what the downside is. You know, would, I guess someone's question might be, well, if I put my name on this, what is my name going to be used for, for other things? Is it going to get sold? Am I going to start getting, you know, different marketing, things like that? If we can assure that that's not going to happen, that would be annoyance that people would want to avoid.
Okay.
Is there a platform that is secure like that? Where it's just on there, there's a, something that says it won't be sold, your name won't be sold, this is just for this topic?
So I think one of the first departments I would reach out to would be our Technology Department. And I know we have access to, you know, things in Google and Microsoft Forms, but again, I don't know all of the extent to their capabilities, so I'd want to explore that with them and see whether they could help set up that parameter, or whether they have a suggestion for something else that might, again, I think the other thing we want is something very easy for the participant. If it takes too much time, or it seems too difficult, then, again, someone might bypass the idea and say, I don't have time for it. So I think that would also be something that I would be looking for. So I'm happy to follow up with that after this meeting. Can I just review what I've heard to make sure that I've understood everything?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm hearing the top five names, along with the suggestions from each one of the board members. I'll be reaching out to Mrs. Campbell and Mr. Browning to see whether they have a suggestion that they would like included. I'm hearing voting only once. If we can get the name of the individual submitted, I'm hearing that that would be good. And I'm hearing that we'd like to do something like a Friday or a Tuesday, something with a four-day window that would give you all time to review that prior to that June 28th board meeting.
I'm sorry, I was saying a four-day window for them to vote.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So whether that's a Friday to a Tuesday, or a Monday to a Wednesday, just as fast as I can get the platform.
Right.
Get ahold of Mr. Browning, Ms. Campbell, get it all put together, then it can go. And then as far as any suggestions for any additional platforms that you might have, certainly I think, again, leveraging our homepage, our Facebook account, again, I'll be happy to reach out to the Early Learning Coalition, and I'm happy to entertain any other ways that we think communication may broaden.
Chair, if I may? Ms. Debick is listening, she's helping, she's leading our leadership class, which is why she's not able to be here. And she said she can do it on Google, but again, what I shared, she reiterated as well, that name would be included, but there could be a disclaimer on there that it wouldn't be used for marketing purposes, if the board is comfortable. But on the Google form, you would just list your name, and I did think, though, the name, to be truly honest, you'd have to list it if...
So, yeah, because I've done some through the Google Docs or something, I've done arrays through them, and it, I was able to restrict it, so that'd be fine, if you guys are good with that.
Chair, you had mentioned something about resubmitting all of the top 10, but I'm wondering, that's a lot in terms of people trying to comb through all that. So from the top 10, I think I, in your synopsis, we're looking at the top five, but that leaves out Bright Stars, which is something that you felt was...
Well, I didn't want, the reason I said, go ahead and add the top 10, then add our five, which would be a total of 15, I didn't want to negate any of the work that had already went into getting these. And I think that since we're just trying to tighten up on the voting procedure, give them the fair opportunity to vote again. If they're that passionate about it, then they'll come back and vote for that name. If, and it may, it may change, if they made, some of the ones that's at the bottom may move to the top.
Right.
Just to be fair.
Yeah, but when you understand voting and stuff like that, statistically wise, people are going to only read like the first few. They may not make it to the bottom. And what I'm seeing on here is I see a lot of replicas, so I'm inclined to think it's, could be the same person or a few people that really would like the first five, and I'm, I feel like that might negate, I just not sure it's necessarily what, how we're thinking should be fair. But that's just my thoughts.
I'll go with whatever you guys want to do.
And I will also clarify the rating system, so we sought a little clarification on that, and so when each thought came in, they were assigned five three-star ratings, all of them. That's really how this platform works, and although it doesn't necessarily appear in any type of a rating graph, they do those five three-stars, because three-stars is the approximate average rating for any single thought, as they have looked across their platform. And then what happens is, as votes come in, they wait to see whether participants, so if that's the average, is three is the average, they wait for participants to then vote, that then either pushes that up or pushes that down. So just clarifying how that rating system worked.
So do you guys want to use less, or are you, I'm fine either way.
Well, I think the Brick City, there's one, two, three, four, is there five, I believe? Five Brick Cities, and we're all a little, you know, I wonder if we could just choose like one Brick City name, you know?
Being included to this?
Yeah, so then that way, that is included, because obviously that was popular, and then add something. I mean, those are just my thoughts, and then it's less to choose from, because if we have 10 or 15, I just not sure everybody is going to scroll to the bottom.
So can we go with the first one, Brick City Early Learning Academy, and then exclude the other three Brick Cities?
I like that. I like Brick City Early Learning Academy.
Do Brick City Early Learning Academy First Light, because that's different, and it was in the top three. Bright Stars, it wasn't in the top five, but a board member feels like that's a good one, and it's different than Brick. So even if we went with those three, plus whatever any of the board members come up with, then that's a much smaller number to put out for a vote.
Okay, so let's do that. If we're in agreement, let's use Brick City Early Learning Academy.
Okay.
First Light Academy. Bright Stars Elementary? Is that what you said, Ms.?
I just like, out of all those names, that was my favorite. I mean, I haven't, I don't have a write-in, I was just being respectful of what was presented to us. Out of all those names, I liked Bright Stars Elementary, but I, for whatever reason, liked Bright Stars Academy, or Bright Stars Early Learning Academy, I like, but I, Bright Stars, whatever.
Let's do this. Brick City Early Learning Academy, First Light Academy, Bright Stars Elementary. Ms. King's recommendation would be Bright Stars Early Learning Academy or something?
Yes.
That would be her recommendation. Ms. Thor's was Livingston.
Livingston Lab School of Early Excellence.
Livingston what?
The Livingston Lab School of Early Excellence.
Okay. And then mine was Fordham Early Learning Academy. And then if you get the other two, that would be your whole list.
Okay.
And vote from there. Is that fair?
Works for me.
Yes.
That works for you?
I got it.
Ms. Clarence?
Dr. Gullett? Yes, I support that, thank you, absolutely.
All right, thank you so much, we'll make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Thank you.
And please use Early Learning Coalition, whoever you need to use to get this out there.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's it.
And let us, and you'll let us know when it's going to be advertised, when the voting period is.
Yes, and do you want me to send you the results as soon as that window closes, so you've got time to look at that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
This is exciting for the community. It's not very often we get to name a school.
Exactly.
I agree.
Historic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? There being none. There being none. Board comments? Ms. Presspatino? Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir.
Superintendent Gullett?
Thank you, Chair. I would just say thank you again to Ms. Fricks, who's leaving us this morning, and thank her for her service and her support in our early learning in our district, so thank you.
Ms. King?
I do not have anything today, thank you.
Ms. Thor?
Nothing for me. I think it's a first.
Nothing for me either.
I'm sure I could come up with something, but this has just been a great morning.
Nothing for me either. Meeting is adjourned at 10:02 a.m.
That is a record.
Thank you. It's not a record, but...
Right, it's got to be historic anyway, for this era.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you.